I want to welcome everybody. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the regularly scheduled board meeting of the Alexander County Board of Education, December 12th of 2017 to order. And I would like to ask everyone if you would join me in a moment of silence and then we'll get ready for our pledge. Thank you. We have four students here tonight. I'm sorry, from Hidnite Elementary School. We've got Sophie Jones. She's a kindergartner, daughter of Shane and Ashley Jones. She's going to help lead us in the pledge, as is Kenzie Fox, a third grade student, daughter of Julie Fox and granddaughter of Joy Fox. We have Dylan Roland, a third grade student, son of Josh and Christie Starr, and Corey Hall, a first grade student, son of Sharlinda and Corey Hall Senior. They would come up and lead us in the pledge. Hello? Hi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Those bright yellow shirts look really good. Board members, you've had a chance to look over your agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions, questions, additions? All those in favor of approval, of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. And now I'd like to recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for our honors and recognition portion of our meeting. Looks like we have a lot of them today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, and audience in attendance. It's always my greatest pleasure to present the honors and recognition portion of the board meeting. Tonight, we honor and recognize the creativity and artistic talents of our students. We had the most entries ever submitted for the holiday card contest, where four students were chosen in the following grade categories: pre-K through second grades, third through fifth grades, sixth through eighth grades, and ninth through 12th grades. I would ask board member Bridget Ryan to come up and help me, please, with the presentations. The first student that we will recognize is from grades pre-K through second grade, and the winner in that category was Leila Geiger. Leila is a first grade student at Ellendale Elementary School. She is the daughter of Robert and Tara Geiger, and I see that she has her grandparents with her tonight also. Please give her a round of applause. Leila, if you will, go stand behind your artwork, okay? And we're going to get a group picture when everybody gets back there. The second category, grades three through five, that winner is Ashton Curtis, a fourth grade student at Stony Point Elementary School. Ashton is the daughter of June Durham and Lauren David Curtis. Please give her a round of applause. And Ashton, if you'll stand behind your artwork. In the third category, that would be grades six through eight, Amerina Chapman, a seventh grade student at East Alexander Middle School. Amerina is the daughter of Andrew Chapman. A round of applause. And this is actually the second time we're recognizing this student. If you all remember, her artwork is also displayed at ASU. And I hope you saw the text that I sent Dr. Harrington. When I was in the building up there last, I took a picture of your artwork and sent it to her. It was beautiful. So, good job. And then the last student we will recognize is from grades nine through 12 at the high school. Keely Sigmund is actually a 12th grade student at Alexander Central. She is the daughter of Shane and Lisa Sigmund. A round of applause. We're going to take a group picture. And parents, we would also offer you the opportunity, if you would like to take a picture of your child with her artwork, we'll arrange that also. Before we take the picture, I want to tell you all what's in your goodie bag. You do have a goodie bag in front of the table. Winners will receive, or they are receiving, a framed copy of your artwork, 30 cards that you can send to your friends and family, a $25 gift card, and other things in the goodie bag. So enjoy that special treat. And please know that tomorrow, when I send our Christmas card electronically to all of my superintendent friends throughout the state, I think that our artwork's the best in the state. So, but I'm just a little partial. Okay? Very good. So, group picture? Parents, would any of you like to get an individual picture with them holding the artwork?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Sure. We can arrange that here. Let me hear. Let me help. Who wants a picture? You all want a picture? Sure. Do you want me to hold the certificate and they stand here in front of the emblem with the artwork? Okay, good. Okay, who's first? Leila, you want to go first? You grab your artwork. Ms. Neave will help you. I'm going to hold your certificate, and you stand here in front of our A and smile big for Mom and Daddy and grandparents. Hold it up. Smile big. You're famous. Okay, next. Grab your... Stand right here. Was the player on? That's good. Wonderful. Great job. Get your goodie bag, okay? You can all do some of that. Can you manage all that? Okay. Thank you. I'll hold your certificate. You grab your... Stand in front of the A and smile big. With D. Okay. I'll write it on my...
She may want a little speech.
She wants to hear the speech also. You all are very talented. Give them one more round of applause. Board member Schrum, will you help me with the next award? Mrs. Jody Frye, eighth grade science teacher at West Alexander Middle School, was honored as the North Carolina District Seven Middle School Science Teacher of the Year at the North Carolina Science Teacher Association Convention held in Greensboro, North Carolina. The award is presented to individuals in school districts to recognize excellence in science teaching in North Carolina and to teachers who exemplify excellent creative and innovative teaching of science. I normally would never say this because I always tell my family, "Do not admit you have any relation to me." But tonight, when I looked out and saw my brother in the audience, that was a nice treat. And Jody is a wonderful sister-in-law. So congratulations, Jody Frye. In front of the A. Both of you in front of the A. And smile big. Oh. Now you have to play. Congratulations. Board member Hardest, will you help me next? We are honored to recognize Jenna Buff as the Alexander County Schools Exceptional Teacher of Excellence for 2017. Jenna is an exceptional children's teacher at Sugarloaf Elementary, and she was recognized at the Exceptional Children's Division 67th Conference on November 16th in Greensboro, North Carolina. Jenna received a plaque, special seating at the morning session of the conference. Her name was listed on the conference program. Her registration and mileage were paid to and from the conference, and she received special recognition during the conference banquet. To be eligible for the Teacher of Excellence Award, the person selected must hold an appropriate license, have at least five years of school experience, must maintain a student caseload, and deliver daily instruction, and be a leader within the school. Jenna Buff is all that and more. She is an exceptional teacher, and we extend heartfelt congratulations to her for this honor. Congratulations, Jenna. And I know that they take you this at the conference, that we would love a photograph with that, okay? She wants us to... Are we centering?
Not really.
Good job. Nine of Alexander County schools received a North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Academic Award for the 2016-17 school year. School accountability growth results are calculated based on EOG and EOC test scores, combined with EVOs scores, a value-added growth model tool. The following schools were recognized by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for achieving the goal of expected academic progress for students during the 2016-2017 school year. Vice Chair Bowman, if you will come up and help me. The State Superintendent of Public Instruction says congratulations to the following schools in Alexander County. Alexander Early College. Alexander Central High School. Bethlehem Elementary School. East Alexander Middle School. Sugarloaf Elementary School. Taylorsville Elementary School. West Alexander Middle School. And Wittenburg Elementary School. Now squeeze that group in.
Mary, get down in front.
Another big round of applause. One Alexander County school, Stony Point Elementary, was recognized for exceeding academic growth expectations for students during the 2016-17 school year. Please come forward, Andy Pomp. Oh, no, you're... Oh, you're not getting off.
You need to put like a spot in the, like a tape.
Good job. Each school recognized has a badge designation on their website. Dr. Griffin, are you able to pull up Stony Point's website and show an example of this badge? Do you see the badge there? Sorry. He's making it big. Go back one. Right there at the top, do you see that in the top corner? Showing their academic growth. A job well done to our schools, also our staff members and teachers. You all are getting the job done, and I just appreciate all of your hard work. Thank you.
Love the orange jacket. I just love... I can't let it go without... Yep. Looks good. All right. We're going to enter the business portion of our meeting now, so if anybody wants to slip out, now's a grand time to do that. You're welcome to stay. Thank you for coming. All right. No one has signed up for public comment, so we're going to move to the consent agenda. Board members, you've had a chance to look over the items in your consent agenda when your board packets came. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
May I go approve?
Second. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And... Oops, sorry. That takes us to our report section, and I'd like to recognize Ms. Renee Stillwell for our presentation and update on my elementary school. Those children were beautiful in their shirts, as bright yellow and looking spanky.
I love them, and they've been practicing. So, and I don't know if you've heard it, but Dylan used his machine to talk to them, so that was really awesome. He's done really well. Well, that's hard to follow, to be honest with you, because all the schools recognized, but I wasn't, so that was a little sading. But, I mean, come on. It's the big orange stain in the room. He's not here, but anyway. I am going to talk about some of the great things going on at Hidnite because I really am proud of the progress that we made. So, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Hefner, thank you for letting me come and share a little bit about our school. This is going to be a little different because I'm not going to throw data at you. I'm just going to throw things at you to tell you who we are and what we're doing. And I do appreciate, I have a lot of staff members who came to support me, so I want to thank you all for coming. We are in the second year of Leader and Me, and it has been an amazing year and amazing transformation for us, and that's what I want to talk about. So, the first thing I want to talk about is the fact that we have a common vision and a common mission at Hidnite, and I feel like that's very important. We are on the same mission, to teach our kids to love learning, to recognize that they all have potential and they all are good at something, and to make sure that we accept them and they can do anything they want. Every morning, our students say a student pledge in the morning. It's something new this year. And in that pledge, they talk about how they're wonderfully made and created for a purpose, that on this day, they're going to do their best, they're going to make sure they behave and follow the rules and try their hardest and be a leader. So, I think that's something that's been wonderful for us this year because it's kept us on a common focus and have a common goal. These are the seven habits, and if you're familiar with the seven habits, that's wonderful. I think these are really important, not only for students, but for adults as well. To be honest, these habits have changed the way that I parent and changed the kind of friend and wife I am. They really have made an effect on us as adults, not only our students. And so I feel like that is really important to recognize. And we call these habits our hero habits because our students are heroes. So, the big thing happening at Hidnite is we are having a paradigm shift. And you all know as well as I do, with any change, you have chaos. So, you're going to have some negativity or some bad things happen when you're trying to make a big change. And that we're doing, because we are trying to change not only the way that our teachers think and the way that they live their lives and the way they teach their students, but also the way that our students think and our community thinks. And so I think that that is a huge thing, and it's not easy at all. It takes a while, but we are getting there. We are getting there. So, some of the paradigms that we're changing is, if you look at this slide, it talks about what paradigm we want to have is the green side and what paradigm we don't want to have is the red side. So, for example, the paradigm of leadership, not just a few kids can be leaders. They all can, in some way. And we do believe that. We believe that everyone has genius, that change has to begin with us, and that we have to empower our students to want to learn and to be smarter and to be better, and we have to develop the whole child. And so that's what we believe at Hidnite. And so as I talk about the changes we're making, I'm going to talk about four different areas, and the first one is culture, because the culture of a building has to be good, or the culture of any workplace has to be good, or it will not be successful. And I believe culture starts with us, and that's the adults in the building. We have to become student-centered. We have to change our perspectives. We are a PBIS school, so we do positive behavior intervention, our Leader and Me habits, and we're also changing our expectations, not just for the students, but for the adults as well. The second area we're working on is the environment. Our environment has changed a lot since the day I walked into Hidnite, and it's changed the way that kids behave as well. They're excited to come. The hallways are bright. We put quotes up everywhere that give them a little extra push on days that they might be having a bad day. We want them to want to come to school and want to try and want to learn, and this has really helped. We changed our car rider line. We put our matrix up, and in our PBIS matrix, we've added the Leader and Me habits. So, we've kind of put everything together for the students to make it an environment that they can successfully learn in. The next thing that we've changed is accountability. There is a shared accountability at Hidnite. It is all of our responsibility to educate all of the students. Not only are you a second grade teacher, but you are a teacher that has to model and has to show all students in that building what it means to be a leader and what it means to be accountable. So, we do have PLCs. Every other week, our student support team meets. Up in the right-hand corner is our attendance board. We post the classrooms with the highest attendance for the month, or highest attendance for the week, and then for the nine weeks, we have a reward for students who have the highest attendance. And we are in, we are above the state average, but yet we're above where we were last year too, at this point, so it's getting better. We want the students to want to be at school, and I think that's made a difference. We also have a lot of staff development that's led by the staff. I have kind of taken a step back, and they are teaching each other. And so that's been a really great transition for us. And the last thing is modeling. We have what's called wigs, and wigs are wildly important goals. And in order for our students to set their own goals, we feel like it's important for the teachers to model setting goals. And so here's some examples of some teacher goals that teachers have set. Some of them are personal. I walked into a teacher's classroom, and I'm not going to say her name because I promised I wouldn't, and I walked into her classroom and I looked at her wig for November and she did not meet it. I didn't say anything, and one of her students came up and said, "You might or not want to look at that because she didn't do it." They are, and hers was to exercise, I think. And so every day, she would have to show them, show them how many steps she made or something on her watch. And they keep track of that, and you can ask some of them, those kids are on them about their wigs, because if we expect students to meet goals, then we have to show them as teachers that we're going to meet goals too. Mine's to drink more water, and I haven't made it yet. It's sad, really. I mean, I'm still working on it, but tracking it helps. So, so that's what we're modeling. And then, of course, community. We do a lot of community events. I feel like we want to honor our community. We want our parents to want to come to school. We do grandparents lunch. We do a Veterans Day. We've done a lot of charity awareness this year to raise money for charities. We sent a lot of stuff to the hurricane victims in Florida. We adopted a school and sent a bunch of stuff to them in Florida. We also have a, a big benevolence. My social worker, Ms. Jamie Jones, and my counselor, Amy Chapman, do a phenomenal job of making sure our students are taken care of. We have a household closet, a school supply closet, a food closet, and a clothing closet. We also had a free yard sale a few weeks ago, and it's not really a sale because it was a giveaway. Parents just came and took whatever clothes they needed. And that's just because we feel like that students need to make sure they have the necessities of life in order to be successful. We do have started a school-wide dojo system where I am on the dojo with the students, and I've had a lot of parents talk about how the students come home and they love getting that principal point when I see them doing what they're supposed to be doing in the hallway. So, that's been successful. Now I'm going to talk about academics, and I want to talk about the positive things. We have grown in math reading and science. We have grown a lot. Are we where the state says we should be as far as growth? No, but we missed it by five hundredths of a point. I don't even know how little that is, but it is really little. Five hundredths of a point is next to nothing. And it hurts my heart, but not for me, but it hurts my heart for them because they work so hard and they grew so much. Our science scores went up by 17 percent. Our math went up by two, and our reading went up by five. I'm really proud of them for this close, and we're going to get there this year, aren't we? And so, the last thing I want to talk about, or one of the last things I want to talk about is Genius Hour. This is, this has been a lot of fun. It was a big undertaking for us when we first started, but once a month, students have Genius Hour, and they're allowed to choose what they go to. I don't know how many of you know about cosmetology. I don't know much, but I'm teaching cosmetology during Genius Hour. I'm teaching them how to put on makeup, and I'm teaching them how to fix their hair. It's a lot of fun, and the kids love it. We have teachers that are doing painting and nails and soccer, and John McKees teaching a group how to play the guitar. I mean, it is a wonderful time because we want our teachers to know that they can learn about other things besides math reading, science, and social studies. So, we don't take a whole lot of academic time to do it, but we do take an hour a month for them to be able to find their genius in something else. So, I want you to hear what the kids have to say about... So, I want you to hear what the kids have to say about Hidnite.
What I love most about Hidnite is when people are struggling, and stuff, and they have somebody to talk to.
What I love the most about Hidnite is all the leadership jobs we can do.
What I like about Hidnite is we have a great playground, and we have bright and colorful hallways.
What I like the best about Hidnite is the teachers, because they're nice, and they give you more chances if you get in trouble.
What I like about Hidnite is that there's a lot of people here, and they get to get along together and be friends.
What I like about Hidnite is we have a Christmas Day every day.
What I like about Hidnite is the teachers that are loving, and how they teach.
What I like about Hidnite would be all the stuff on the walls, and how it talks about the seven habits, like be proactive, and put first things first, and seek first to understanding, to be understood.
My favorite thing about Hidnite is my teachers, because they're always nice to me.
And that's our babies, and we love them. I didn't think bringing them all here was appropriate, it takes them long, so I just still have them. But one of the things I want to talk about is, I don't know if you've ever read about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, but it says that if students' needs aren't met psychologically, safety, loving, if they don't feel loved, if they don't have self-esteem, or if they don't have self-actualization, they will not be successful, and they will not be able to learn. So, that's why our goal is to educate the whole child. This is a painting in our school. I think it really shows who we are, because we want to educate the student academically, socially, emotionally, and physically, because we feel like our job is to create a whole person. So, I want to end with one of, this is one of my favorite quotes, it says, "Students will not learn if their minds and hearts are filled with trauma and anxiety." You have to show them you care, show them they matter, and then you can watch them learn. And so, I want to, the last thing I want you to remember about Hidnite is that we are one vision, one school. The only way forward, if we're going to improve the quality of the environment, is to get everyone involved. And that's all I have for you today. Do you all have any questions?
That's excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoyed it very much. And are these from you?
Actually...
No, that's from my board.
Gotcha, okay.
No, but I wanted to tell you the little handy things, and we have a club, they're called the Kindness Club, it's for Genius Hours, and they made those.
Thank you so much, and please tell the club thank you.
Yes.
Okay, now I'd like to recognize Dr. Bill Griffin for K three class size data report.
Madam Chair, Dr. Hefner, members of the board, thank you for giving me the opportunity this evening to speak on something that's near and dear to all of our hearts, and that's class size, and what that means for us in the future for Alexander County schools. I have a, some of these links are hot, that you guys will have an opportunity to look at these slideshow presentations, but we received an article from the School Board Association here last week, reflecting on class size, and what that looks like for us in the future. And I think it's very pertinent, and certainly a time for us to look at and reflect on what our class sizes look like here within our school system, and the proposed laws that are, have been passed, that we must, are mandated to follow, coming up, starting next year. Two thousand, what I kind of do, try to do here is create a map of the prior years to this year and the next year, and how these changes are going to affect us. Two thousand sixteen, seventeen, as you can see at the top part here, our class sizes, we were allowed to have class size average of one teacher per twenty-one students in grades kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade. Fourth and fifth grades, basically, L E A has a decision to put the number in that class that's acceptable, and for learning to take place in that class. So, those are the guidelines in which we were adhered to and followed. And then later, as you see down below that, we can exceed those per individual class by three students. So, we could have up to twenty-four students in kindergarten through third grade, all right? So, that was sixteen and seventeen. And please keep in mind also, that our allocation and what we're funded on, per those classes, is one to eighteen first grade, one to sixteen in second grade, one to seventeen in third grade, excuse me, one to eighteen kindergarten, first grade is one to sixteen, and then seventeen, one to seventeen is second and third grade, and that's what we're funded on, and then twenty-four for fourth and fifth. So, by these stipulations and guidelines, we're allowed to have some excess in those classes that we're funded at. House Bill thirteen last year came about on April twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, it was passed, and these things became law, and we had mandates in which we had to follow at that time. At that time, or the onslaught of House Bill thirteen and it being passed, at one point, it was said that we were going to follow the class size rules of eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen immediately. However, after a lot of discussion, came about, and they kind of found some happy medium, and a ground for us to follow, and that's what we had for this school year. And that's basically, in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade, we could have an L E A, a district-wise class size average of one to twenty in those classes, and that's currently what we're following now, all of our classes, grades kindergarten first and second and third grade, for our L E A were under twenty as an average. We can exceed that by three on individual class size, and that takes us to a one to twenty-three ratio per teacher-student ratio in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade. So, we adhere to those as well. Dr. Hefner will be signing an affidavit, turning into our state superintendent by Friday, verifying that we are adhering to the guidelines that have been put forth for the seventeen, eighteen school year. And we have gotten verification from the Department of Public Construction, that we have met all of those guidelines this school year, so that's huge for us. However, moving forward for eighteen, nineteen, the new law, House Bill thirteen, states that we must adhere to the following guidelines, and that's kindergarten, one to eighteen, grades one, one to sixteen, grades two, one to seventeen, and grades three, one to seventeen, and then four through twelve. Local school administration units have the maximum flexibility to use allocated teacher positions to maximize student achievement, so we can put what we need in those classes, okay? But we have to follow these mandates, one to eighteen, one to sixteen, one to seventeen, seventeen, and then individual class size, we can exceed that by three per individual class, so that takes us to one to twenty-one, one to nineteen, one to twenty, and one to twenty, okay? Does that make sense, from where we've been, from just sixteen, seventeen, up until this school year, and then where we have to be by the start of next school year? So, what does this mean for our county? Ultimately, currently sitting in our classrooms now, these are our L E A averages that we have. You can see kindergarten, we're at eighteen point three four, first grade seventeen point two three, second grade seventeen point nine zero, third grade seventeen point one eight, fourth grade twenty-three point eight one, fifth grade twenty-one point four six. And that's also with the use of Title I teachers embedded into those numbers to reduce those as well. For a hundred, and we have a hundred and sixteen teachers supporting those needs in K five. Eighteen, nineteen school year, we have to meet the seventeen, sixteen, excuse me, the eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen. So, to get to those averages, we have to increase the number of teachers that we have in those classes. And I have taken a rough estimate here, these are our current numbers, as of last week, in those classes, so if we're comparing what we look like now to next year, then ultimately, we're going to have to add four point five, five teachers at this particular point in the, in the school year. So, the other point that we must keep in mind is what we're funded on. We're funded on this ratio here. One eighteen, one to sixteen, one to seventeen, one to seventeen, and twenty-four, and twenty-four for one year, okay? So, in the prior years, when we could exceed these numbers, we were able to use some of those extra additional slots to fund our enrichment positions, enrichment teachers, and everything kind of balanced out. If we're only allowed this amount of funding for our schools, and we must meet these criteria in an eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, that leaves no funding for those other positions. So, what does that mean for us? Renee said earlier, she said, "All change is preceded by chaos." Right now, I'm in the middle of chaos, and what that means for us. So, we have to make some decisions, we have to look at things tightly and closely, and we have to meet these mandates by next school year, unless something changes. There's always talk that things may happen, and we may be funded for those enrichment classes, has been one of the conversations. I've had other conversations that, you know, some of this stuff may change. I've had other conversations that things will be very, very strict, and this will not change for next year. So, again, I'm in the middle of chaos at this point, figuring out what that means for our district. But it's something we're looking at, something that not only Alexander County, but every district in the state of North Carolina is aware of, and trying to work with, and figure out possibilities and ways in which we can move forward, and yet, meet the mandates and criteria and laws that have been put before us. So, I've been active in our Personnel Association of North Carolina group that we have, and we meet regularly, and this is part of our conversation we have throughout the state of North Carolina, on making these changes and meeting these criteria. Any questions?
I asked Dr. Griffin to make this presentation tonight, because, really, two reasons. We start talking about allotments and such, February, March. I just want the reality of what this looks like for us at this time, because the truth is, you saw that, right now, if we based these new numbers on current student numbers, we would need four and a half teachers, so you may as well say, we would need five teachers. You all know that our enrollment is declining, so we already know we're going to have a loss of the number of teachers that we are allotted in Alexander County. So, we're going to have to backfill these extra positions in grades K one, two, and three, knowing that we're losing teaching positions because of declining enrollment. And I just don't want any surprises, because we have a lot of very difficult work cut out for us beginning February, March, when we start doing kindergarten screenings, and we see the number of kinders that we will anticipate bringing in as new students this next year, and the number of seniors that we will be graduating. And that's when the games begin, with the teacher shuffle, and trying to do what's best on a very limited budget.
And Dr. Hefner, what we had prior to this school year, with being able to add additional students to those classes, we were also able to capture positions for our enrichment teachers as well. We have to meet these criteria, and that kind of cuts that piece out. So, that's something we have to keep in mind also. Another piece of this is currently, as we look at the number of teachers we have, if we had, if we have to add four teachers, five teachers, six teachers, whatever that may be, that's also adding classrooms to some schools. If you have schools that are high in capacity, and don't have extra classrooms, but yet, it calls for us to reduce those classes and divide those classes up, that requires different space. And we're very fortunate, we do have class size within our district, I believe, as far as facilities. Many districts across the state are not only concerned about personnel and what that looks like, but they're actually building wings, they're bringing in mobile units to add in these additional classes, so that's costing them hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to make these changes to their district to meet these criteria. So, I think we're fortunate in the fact of space, that we can find space for our classrooms and classes, but we have to begin looking at what that looks like from a personnel standpoint.
Thank you, Dr. Griffin.
Thank you, good job.
Now, I'd like to recognize communities and schools of Northwest North Carolina, a grant update by Glendora Yarborough. And now, we get to talk about these.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, and Board Members, and Dr. Hefner. I am here to give some good news. We wrote a grant to North Carolina DPI, and received it to expand five full-time positions in our elementary schools. And the grant was just awarded to us, and we will, that position will be filled February first, starting February first, so we're in the process of, you know, taking applications or resumes, and we will set up interviews, and then we will start with those in February first. So, we, the schools are Ellendale, Hidnite, Stony Point, Taylor'sville, and Whittenburg. And the way we chose those schools is, Dr. Hefner, I came to you, I'm not, I didn't look back to see when it was, but several months ago, to tell you that we had moved from the middle school to the elementary schools. And when we had, when we started that conversation with Dr. Hefner, she sent out some, a survey to her principals, to ask for some information, and according to that information that we got back, that data is how those schools were chosen. So, the schools were chosen on free lunch, three or more visits to the office, grade level, not, you know, not reading on grade level, and enrolled in three or more schools.
And absences, we looked at absences.
And absences. And so, according to that criteria, those were how the schools were chosen. So, we're very excited. Those site coordinators will be on the payroll of communities and schools, and that grant is for two years, and nothing is sure, but DPI has said that it will, they're hoping that it'll be a reoccurring grant, so.
That's really good news.
And these employees will be employed through communities and schools, they won't be considered school system employees.
Will that give us eight total employees, or how many?
That's going to be, give you five, five sites.
We only had the two.
We have two, and we have one in the high schools, yes, yes, yes. You have Stephanie Davis in the high schools, exactly right, you're right.
So, it'd be eight total employees?
No, that would be six.
Six, okay.
Because Angie Yates is considered, she's a new business school employee, but she's employed in both counties.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, as a program director.
Okay, great.
And so, those cute little pens came from communities and schools of Northwest North Carolina. That little fuzzy hair will clean your phone, and, yeah.
Thank you.
So, thank you, and Merry Christmas, and thank you for what you do. And what an uplifting board meeting. I just thought, wow, it's been so great to be here, so thank you.
Well, thank you for coming, we appreciate the good news. Okay, now I'd like to recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for a parent focus group report. We're sorry to hear that Dr. Curry is not feeling well, and won't be here to help the presentation.
She was out yesterday, but she only made it part of the day today, and don't tell her, but after she went home, we got out the Corrocks wipes, and we wiped everything, because we're trying to stay healthy. But I do appreciate the opportunity, Madam Chair, to come to you, as promised, when I started talking about Dr. Curry and I meeting with every parent advisory group at each of the schools, I promised you that we would take the information given to us in those meetings, compile it, and give you a report of what we found after the meetings. So, I just want to start by saying, we carried through with thirteen parent advisory group meetings, and that does include the Head Start Policy Council, that was just a wonderful meeting, Macy Jones, thank you, and we also met with the Student Advisory Council at the high school. So, we've had a semester of meetings, but boy, they have been good. Going into the meetings with the parents, and Dr. Griffin, will you drive me? Thank you. Going into the meetings with the parents, we really asked them three pretty simple questions. The first one, what do you want most as a result of your child's educational experience in the Alexander County school system, and are you getting what you want? The second question, in what way is the Alexander County school system most helpful in preparing your student for life beyond high school, and that included college, career, or military? And then the last question, what advice would you give the Alexander County school system to better prepare your student for life beyond high school? I will tell you that questions two and three were a little difficult if parents only had children in elementary school, because it was hard for them to see that far ahead. They could only speak to what's going on in elementary school, but at the middle and high school levels, they told us a lot about questions two and three. But the overall themes that we came away with, really, there were... But the overall themes that we came away with, really there were seven of them. And they are ranked with what we heard most. The first thing that we need to address when we start rewriting the new strategic plan, when that work begins in January, the first thing that was just resounding, we heard it 69 different times, people said it, and I'll show you, I've broken down each of these seven areas with some specifics. But they said, what we want most is our children challenged and prepared for college. They wanted them to be prepared so that they are successful when they get there. The second thing with 50 total responses, career readiness. Forty-five responses, character education and being good people. That was also a biggie. Forty-five total responses, just to have some basic life skills to ensure that they are able to do what they need to do upon graduation. Twenty-eight responses, increased opportunities. Thirteen responses, more resources. And 10 responses pertain to school safety and discipline. I would like to break down these themes and talk a little bit about each one. The first one being college preparation with 69 total responses. And the bar graph ranks where those fell and how many times we heard them throughout the meetings. You can see that being challenged and prepared for college were the top two. And when they talked about challenging their children, they talked about rigor and to make sure that their coursework was rigorous and what they were being required to do was rigorous. But they also talked about wanting some more AP offerings at the high school. We heard things at every site in one way or another that they wanted their gifted children to be challenged. What we heard is, is that we do a great job as a school system with the children who are average or below average, but for this, for whatever reason, many of these parents felt that their gifted children really still were not being challenged. And that's what they wanted. We heard comments that the early college is very positive as far as offering some challenging opportunities to children. And they also talked about in that college preparation piece, they wanted their children to have additional help with filling out college applications, filling out scholarships, pursuing financial aid. So those were some of the things that we heard in this particular area or this particular theme. The next thing was being prepared for a career with 50 total responses. You can see that blue part, 36% of the comments were just about exposure to different careers, career awareness. But the parents talked a lot about they wanted their children to work on soft skills. They know that they're in these devices way more than they were as children and that they need some help with making sure that when they take that step to go out with job interviews and such, that they're able to interview well. They want them to have eye contact, oral communication, positive and good written communication, social skills, and to be able to deal with conflict resolution. They know that they are raising a group of millennials and it looks very different as far as what it did when they were children. And they are asking us for help in this area. The third area pertained to character and citizenship. If we heard it once when we said, what do you want most for your child beyond high school? It was to be good people, to be good citizens in Alexander County. We heard over and over, we want our children to know what is good character. That we want them to know that they are responsible for things, to have tolerance, social skills, again, independence. I have to tell you a funny on the one as far as basic skills, as far as some of their wants. Some of them want so many things, I'm not sure we're going to squeeze it all in in that day that we have right now. But they just want their children to be productive, but most of all, they talked about, they just want them to be good and to stay out of trouble. This next one's the funny one, the basic skills. You can see where some of those things fall. They very much, in every single setting, somebody would bring up that financial literacy piece. I call it personal finance. They said, we want our children to be able to balance a checkbook. I don't care if they don't ever write a check. We want them to be able to understand when there is enough money there and when there's not enough money to buy things. They just wanted those basic kinds of things. They talked a lot about they wanted them to be able to fill out tax documents and just some very basic skills as far as math skills that they will need in life. Also, they wanted us to do things such as teach them to sew on a button, microwave food in the microwave. Some wanted them to learn how to cook, but others were realistic and said, well, maybe if they could just learn to use the microwave. And some other things. And I remember the night that that topic with this particular group of parents, it was big. And I looked at Dr. Curry as we were driving back to the office and I said, how much time do you think we need to add to the day to do all that? But, but in those conversations, when they would go off on things like sewing on a button and different things, they would also remind themselves that as parents, they are responsible for some of this as well. And then the conversation would turn to, yes, we're willing to do these things, but we know that some of the children don't have the parent resources to do it, to learn. So, you know, they've told us what they want, now we have to figure out how to make it happen. The next thing that parents talked about was that they wanted more opportunities for their children. You can see the arts came up a lot. They wanted more art opportunities for their children. And many parents talked about the CTE programs and how strong they were, but wanted even more CTE opportunities in order to make sure that the children do have a high level of career readiness. More resources came up as one of the seven themes. And I want you to look at some of the comments, and these were pulled directly from the data. You can see that about 10 of these came from elementary parents and what they want. I sat in the meetings and I listened way more than I talked because that was the deal going in. We wanted their feedback. It wasn't a time for debate. It wasn't a time for me to try to justify what we do and why we do. But I have to tell you, it was loud and clear from the elementary level. Things such as the elementary teachers need more help, that teacher assistants, when we talk about more help, that's where the teacher assistant conversation turned, more support staff for students, media coordinators, that was a hot topic for some of the parent groups, depending on the school where we were meeting that particular night. Felt like small elementary schools were not getting their fair share. And that is because some of the cutbacks are being felt at the small elementary schools right now. Wanted to avoid combination classes. And I really hate to tell you, but based on what Dr. Griffin just told you, we will have more combination classes than we probably ever have based on House Bill 13. And trying to stretch teachers as far as we can stretch them. But I just mentioned that more resources definitely came up a lot at the elementary schools. And then discipline, I want you to know that parents very much want safe schools. They appreciate safe schools, but the thing that they talked about, and I think it's because they perceive our schools as being safe already. The things that they wanted to talk about with discipline is to ensure that there is more consistency dealing with consequences for behaviors. And what we heard was sometimes children are treated differently based on who they are, who their parents are, and if they're athletes. I mean, quite frankly, that's some of the comments that we got. So that is something that as we go forward with the new strategic plan, we have to understand that this is what parents want and we have to work to fit it into our new goals. I also mentioned that we met with the Student Advisory Council at the high school. And in all honesty, my tenure as superintendent, I had never met with a high school student group. I didn't know what to expect, but I have to be honest with you, it was my favorite group. And the reason being is if you want some brutal honesty, go to the high school and sit with them for an hour and smart lunch. And what we did, we asked them the same three questions, but we tailored those to the children. What do you want most or what did you want most from this school system? And they told us. They told us that they needed some more engaging instruction, that sometimes that lecture, well, not sometimes, they all said that it gets pretty boring. They wanted active teaching and learning, more hands-on learning experience. They wanted their teachers engaged with them, to know them, to know what they need and want. They wanted to be ready for college. They wanted a strong foundation, study skills. We even had some young men. I had a young man and this was heart wrenching. He looked at me and he said, Dr. Hefner, on the day that I graduate, it's me. I have to do this on my own. And he said, I don't have a clue how to fill out a college application. And I said, if you tell me what you need, I will arrange and make it happen. Because he was serious. He said, I don't have a clue how to pursue financial aid, how to fill out the form, and I'm going to have to have some scholarship help if I do anything beyond the day that I graduate from high school. They also talked about, we need to make them more independent at an earlier age. They felt like that we do, for the most part, hold their hands too much. And then all of a sudden, it seems like the flip of a coin, do it on your own. And they're not quite sure that they're ready for that yet. They talked about they would like more monitoring of smart lunch and for the children who need to be in different places to make some more of that happen, just to get a little better grip on smart lunch. One freshman, I hate to say, did not like the freshman academy and felt that she had been sold a bill of goods when they told her at middle school that she was going to have a lot of freedom at the high school. And again, I just listened mostly and took notes and shook my head and smiled. I didn't tell her that she will have three more years for a lot more independence, but she just outright said, I do not like freshman academy. They do like seminar at the high school and that was refreshing to hear. They felt like relationships were built during that time with staff members. They want more opportunities for online courses and online classes for those students who want to do more on their own. They want to have that opportunity. And just more variety in their coursework. And then the last thing they told us, they would like to have had some foreign language earlier on, even as early as elementary school. So, as I said, the parents and students, they told us answers to our questions. Now in January, we get to sit down and figure out how we build all of this into a new strategic plan. We do have a business advisory group, which Susan has something on tonight's agenda to talk to you about. I'm planning to go to that group at their next meeting and ask them as employers, those three questions. I'm going to tailor it to the business world and see what our Alexander County business owners tell us. And then also, I would like some teacher input, possibly with the Teachers of the Year, and sit down and talk to them as far as teacher input. And once we have all of this gathered, we will be ready to start writing and drafting and just working on a new strategic plan. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I want to say it was quite an undertaking, I know, 13 separate meetings. And we appreciate you doing that. It's a novel approach, getting real input. I hope that we're able to bring a lot of that into our curriculum. I don't know that we can bring it all. It's a lot of, a lot of input, but I think it's a good place to start and it's good timing with the strategic plan redrafting.
Yes.
Thank you, and Dr. Curry, for doing that.
And seven strong themes. And, and, you know, they're ranked based on the responses, so we have some good work ahead of us.
Good, good. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Good data.
All right, and now you're back on the hot seat for the superintendent's report.
You do have this attached to your agenda. I hate that Sherri Williams is not in here. Teresa, will you see if she's still in her office or anywhere to be found? I just want to recognize Sherri. She is a very special member of this school system. She's the Director of School Nutrition. And she started her career at Stony Point Elementary School in 1992. And then she has served as the Director of the School Nutrition Program since 1993. This is her last board meeting before her retirement, which is effective January 1st. And I just want to encourage every one of you to reach out to her. Obviously, her email will still be operational, at least for a month. But if you could just say, thank you, I can say that it's been a pleasure working with her. And she will be missed as far as this central office family. It will be very different. And I just ask you to join me in wishing Sherri Williams the best. As Dr. Griffin said, I will be submitting the required affidavit of the K-3 class size to the Department of Public Instruction on Friday. This is a first. I've never had to submit a notarized affidavit saying that we are adhering to the class size requirements, but we are in Alexander County, so it was a pretty easy affidavit to sign. And as I said, it's just an attestation that we are complying with the class size requirements. I have become aware recently, in 2017, North Carolina's legislature proposed two bills, Senate Bill 452 and House Bill 866. Both bills suggested a $1.9 billion statewide school bond referendum. And they proposed that it go on the November 2018 voting ballot. In order to be put on the ballot, action's still needed in the upcoming session of the General Assembly. And that session officially begins on May 16th. Under the proposed statewide bond, Alexander County schools would be earmarked for almost $8 million of money that could be used for new construction, renovation of existing facilities and technology infrastructure, and all the related expenses such as purchasing land, architectural fees, and such. I would ask each of you to speak to our legislative delegates about the importance of getting this on the ballot in November 2018. And the Facilities Committee, I think that we need to meet again to draft a list of needs in the system so that when we reach out to our State Senator and House of Representatives member, that we can actually tell them, these are the needs in Alexander County and this almost $8 million would go a long way in helping us meet these needs. So I would just suggest that we draft a document that we can start sharing. I think it would also be good to share with County Manager Rick French and the Board of Commissioners. My fourth bullet is about a fun activity. It's about the Old Fashioned Christmas and that's scheduled for Saturday down Main Street in Taylorsville. The event will include ice skating, carriage rides, shopping, a live nativity scene, and much more. The event will be held from 10 until 9:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Saturday. And I just say this, as with the Apple Festival, the proceeds from this event will be donated to our schools for the needy children's funds. And that is always a welcomed gift. And lastly, our teachers and students, their last day before the break is next Wednesday, December 20th. It is an early dismissal day with the high school and middle schools being dismissed at 12:30. The elementary schools will be dismissed at 12:45. And then schools will resume a normal schedule on Wednesday, January 3rd. That's for students and staff. And I just encourage everyone to enjoy the much deserved break. break. Questions?
No.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to new business, and we have a proposed new Board of Education policy. It's on for the first reading, but I understand that it is, needs to be moved, action needs to be taken tonight because it's supposed to be effective January first of two thousand eighteen.
Correct. And so, Board members, I did leave you a little goodie at your station, too, so maybe I can go to Hidden Knight's next genius hour so that my goodie is a little more exciting. But you do have a document in front of you, the seventeen eighteen CBCC CTE Business Advisory Council. And a little background information, in the world of CTE, Career and Technical Education, we have recognized the need for business advisory councils for years, and we've had one. When I first came into this position, we actually did not have an active council, so I created one, we started one. But then I was also asked to join the CBCC Advisory Council, and we realized that it's the same people, you know, and when you're in a small county like Alexander, it's always the same people that are involved. So because we had a lot of duplication and we were meeting almost at the same time, and a lot of our goals and objectives were very, very similar, we decided, both boards agreed, that we would combine that. So that's why it's a CBCC CTE Advisory Council. And so we've been operating under that for the past three or four years, once we merge those two boards. But for some reason, the legislatures decided this past fall that they needed to put it into law that CTEs needed to have advisory councils. So that happened, like I said, this past fall, so that's why you have a new School Board Policy twenty-six seventy Business Advisory Councils. But because of the way it was written, it does have to be approved by January the first. Now, the law actually says that the Board of Education appoint members, but since we already have a committee, my hope tonight is that you would just approve the members that we have, and we do meet the criteria that has been specified by the law. Education representatives, you must have the superintendent or a designee, the Career and Technical Education Director, which is me, the president of the community college or a designee, and a principal of at least one school. And as you can see by the list in front of you, we have met that criteria. For business and industry, they have the, it's specified that you must have at least five additional members from business, industry, workforce, economic development, basic stakeholders in the community. So again, if you look at the list, you can see that we have at least five additional members that meet this criteria. So everyone is included that needs to be. There are two additional things on the policy. One is they decided that the CTE director had to serve as secretary, and that's, they didn't know me when they made that announcement, because I'm not a good secretary. But when the board, when this council meets again in February, then we can make that change then. That is not something that has to be specified by January. The first, only that the members are approved. The second thing is each advisory council must have bylaws, and we currently don't have bylaws. We have what we call a working paper, so a working document. So we have the foundation for bylaws, they're just not technically approved bylaws. So again, when we meet in February, that will be one of the pieces on the agenda, that we move from our working document to official bylaws, and then we will have met all the criteria specified in the legislation. So, Madam Chairman, it is because the law says it has to be approved by January the first, and this is December, so I do ask that y'all consider the council members that we already have in place.
Okay, so just for my clarification, we need to approve the officers and the members on this list?
Well, they're just all the council members. All the law states is that you approve the members of the council.
Okay.
So that would include officers. I just specified so you would know who the officers were.
Okay. And then the policy itself needs to be approved, so we've got two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I did notify-
Two actions.
Two separate actions. So I did notify the board that this, of the time constraint on this earlier, so everyone had a clear opportunity to look at it. So first, I would ask for a motion to approve Policy twenty-six seventy as presented on the first reading.
Seven.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of Business Advisory Council Policy twenty-six seventy, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carries unanimously. And then I need a motion to approve the members of the, would be twenty-seven, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen CTE Business Advisory Council.
Moves to approve the members of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen Business Advisory Council.
As presented here. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Aye.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So that carries unanimously as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Now we would recognize Sherri Mahaffey for a bunch of policy revisions, first reading.
Okay. We are going to catch back up with our policies.
Yay. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I do.
So tonight, we have the first reading of policies in the two thousand and three thousand series. In the two thousand series, the Board of Operations, we have two policies. And in the three thousand series, Educational Programs, we have thirteen policies. So I will be bringing these back next month for a second reading after we get some input.
Okay. I do have a question.
Yes.
If you don't mind, and if you can't answer it, you can certainly get back to me on it. Policy twenty-three-ten, which is the very first one, is, are those mandatory? Are all of these mandatory, or are there suggestions? Because there appeared to be quite a bit of change to some of the policies.
Well, we can look at the law.
Okay.
And anything that isn't specified in the law is, you know, we can change.
Okay. So probably what I'll do is get any questions or concerns from the board, and then maybe you and I can-
Okay.
-sit down, or the policy council can meet if that's appropriate as well. I just know there were some that were quite, that seemed to be quite a bit of deviation from current policy, and not sure I'm comfortable with all of that.
Okay.
So I wanted to know what was mandatory and what was not.
Okay. We can take a look.
Great. Thank you. So we'll bring that back again at the next meeting for a second reading. All right. Is there anything else from the board? All right, that takes us to, I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dash eleven eight three and a six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries? Thank you all.